Good afternoon. My name is David. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees thanks you for joining their April special board meeting by teleconference. The board is always interested in hearing public input. If you have pre-registered to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda, please press star three now. Again, if you have pre-registered to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda, please press star three now on your phone keypad to be put into queue to speak. A member of our staff will take your name. When you hear Chair Steen say your name, you will be live on the call for two minutes. You will hear a chime sound to indicate you have 10 seconds remaining. For all others who speak during this meeting, please remember to identify yourself before speaking each time you speak. I will now turn the call over to Chair Steen.
I want to call to order the April 20th, 2020, special meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, and I'd ask our General Counsel Carolyn Schellman to call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Steen. Chair Steen, are you present?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Present.
Mr. Kelly?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Present.
Mr. Steen, we have all members present, and we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Let's move to item two, which is the safety message. Mayor, knowing how busy you are, thank you again for participating on this call, and I want you to know we all appreciate your leadership. And item two is a safety message, and I thought it would be an opportunity for you to speak directly to our CPS Energy family, if you would, please, Mayor, on the current COVID situation.
Great. Thank you very much, Chairman. And on behalf of the City of San Antonio team and our citizens here in San Antonio, I want to recognize and thank all of the CPS staff and leadership, especially those frontline workers who are out there making sure that folks have the bare necessities taken care of in our community. It's very much appreciated and noticed, and also a big salute to our CPS linemen out there. Real quick on the COVID update for San Antonio, yesterday we reported our 1,000th case. Officially, it's 1,015 confirmed cases of COVID-19. We have now 39, I believe it's 39 deaths to report as of today. It has been over a month since this began, our Phase Two preparations and response, and where we are today is in a pretty healthy clip in terms of testing of our community, although testing in San Antonio is still like the rest of the United States, which is woefully behind where we should be as a global community. But we are in a place where we feel confident to say that the social distancing we've been practicing for the last month is paying off, and the trending that's happening, the data is starting to show some signs of, or good signs. That being said, our stay-home order is still in place. We anticipate it will be in place for a little while longer at least, and are also preparing ourselves for a transition, whether that's state guidance, which we know the governor is in various stages of loosening up state restrictions, but also local guidance. And to that effect, the judge and I have appointed a health transition team, which will, over the next week and a half, be producing a list of recommendations for us to meet and conditions and circumstances that we need to have addressed before we are in a position of loosening up social distancing restrictions. Once those recommendations are produced, they're going to shift over to an economic transition team that is going to be announced here shortly by the judge and myself, that will interpret those recommendations and start to work with the various sectors of San Antonio to establish safe ways that they can begin to implement alternative social distancing that would allow us, when the time is right, to begin to open a few things up that we've been wanting. All that being said, I can't emphasize enough, what we're doing is working, and we're not done with the process of social distancing yet. We will be guided by the best public health data and experts, and they are telling us to stay the course, and so that's our intent. So again, thank you all very much for what you're doing operationally within your businesses here at CPS and also in the public to help us keep people healthy and to save lives. And my next report hopefully will be a little bit more details into what a transition would look like, but for now, let's stay hunkered down and be as healthy as we can. We are going to get through this together. That's all I have. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also have, our CEO is down under this safety message, and Paula Gold Williams, do you want to add anything?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, board members, for being here. I do want to add in a bit, just number one, confirming that the leadership that the mayor and Judge Nelson have shown has been very instrumental, especially to our workforce. We continue to point our employees to getting more education, and we believe it's exceptionally relevant that we understand how COVID is affecting our community directly. And so we continue down this journey. It is still very uncertain. Our 3,100 employees all across our system are working hard, and they are modifying their procedures, they're taking social distancing beyond seriously, and very much interested in making sure that they are walking the talk and that they are using all the practices before them, including masks, frequent hand washing, distance processes, and really good communication between the entire staff. I will talk a bit more about the implications of COVID on our operations, but once again, I want to very much thank everyone on the board for their leadership and their support of CPS Energy at this time. All of our employees are deeply grateful for this support.
Thank you very much. And let's move to item three, which is the invocation. Xandra Pulis is going to give the invocation, and she's a very important part of our legal team. I'm not sure I have your exact title, Ms. Pulis, if you could tell us that for the record, and then please proceed with the invocation.
Yes, sir. I'm Xandra Pulis. I'm Deputy General Counsel and Chief Records Management Officer for CPS Energy. At this time, would you please pray with me? We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers, and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Pulis. Let's move to the next item, which is public comment, and of course, that provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of the meetings posted agenda items. We'll follow a similar process as to what we've done for in-person board meetings. I'll invite pre-registered speakers to speak in the order in which they registered, so we may hear their comments. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda for this meeting. For this meeting, we have six registered speakers, who will each have two minutes to speak, and speakers will hear a chime sound when 10 seconds remain, letting them know that they should wrap up their comments. Speakers should state their first and last name, what organization or group they represent, if applicable, and indicate the agenda item number they're going to speak about. Our first speaker is DeeDee Valmaras, followed by Celia Valas.
Good afternoon, CPS Energy. I hope that all of you at CPS Energy and your families are staying safe. Thank you for that update from the mayor regarding our health emergency. At the March 2nd Board of Trustees meeting, Mayor Nuremberg made a recommendation for a rate advisory committee. A lot has happened since then because of the COVID-19 health emergency. However, we haven't heard anything else about the proposed rate advisory committee since then. So my only question is asking you all, what is the status of the rate advisory committee? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valmaras. And the second speaker is Celia Valas, followed by Alice Canostaro.
Hi, my name is Celia Valas, and I am with the Texas Organizing Project. I want to urge the board to continue working on the rate advisory committee and to provide an update or give a date by when we can expect an update. I also ask that CPS Energy create an avenue for public participation that is focused on fielding questions and comments about customers' current needs and worries around COVID-19. I know that there was a Facebook Live event last week, but this is not enough. You are a company that claims a people-first mentality. That should include creating ways to hear the needs of the people, especially any needs not being currently addressed by your COVID-19 plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Alice Canostaro, followed by Justin Lysia.
My name is Alice Canostaro Garcia. I am a city public service energy ratepayer, part of the elder community, and an environmental stakeholder with Enerya Mia. I am appreciative of the wisdom Mayor Nuremberg has shown with his stay-home order for San Antonio, also calling for the use of masks to protect us from COVID-19. Stay the course. So, as Ms. Valmaras noted, that the mayor put forth a proposal for the rate advisory committee in the March Board of Trustees meeting, and we haven't heard anything about it since. I implore City Public Service Energy to continue planning for a rate advisory committee and ask that they give the community an update on what they have so far. We elders especially look for reasonable rates. Even those of us fortunate that receive Social Security or pensions, we can only stretch a nickel so far. I look forward to hearing your answer to this request for information about the formation of the rate advisory committee for CPS Energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Justin Lysia, followed by Greg Harmon.
Hi, yes. My name is Justin Lysia, and I am also calling because I'm interested to know what the status of the rate advisory committee is, and that we also ensure that the rate advisory committee is staffed by the public and not by the board or by city council, and that it's actually selected by the people and that they are responsive to the people. Other than that, I really think that the city and CPS need to strongly consider the non-property-owning citizens when deciding policy in the near future because of how many people who are renters are suddenly jobless, and how for the expected future, we're supposed to be reaching up to 30% unemployment. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Greg Harmon, and then who's our fifth speaker, and then the sixth and final speaker will be Aaron Arguello. Go ahead, Mr. Harmon.
Super. Thank you, Greg Harmon, this year at our club. Thank you for this opportunity, for creating an opportunity for public comment, as I believe, directed by the governor for governmental agencies, boards, and elected leadership. I do want to think about, I thank you all for your work, obviously, on the COVID-19 crisis, our pandemic. I want to think about what's coming beyond, once we get over the hump, and move into what's sure to be a very difficult period, as Justin mentioned, in terms of unemployment, recession, but potentially depression. We're hearing a lot of messaging from the mayor and as well as the county judge that we're not going to let anyone fall between the cracks in this period, but it's obvious, and we all know that there's many people who were already deep inside those cracks before this crisis took hold. And so I want to just recognize that, and I know that getting power turned off is ongoing. Our neighbors went for months without power, had no idea how to get it turned on. They had a massive bill to pay. We eventually showed them how to work through the system and got some debt relief. But I want to think about, we're going to need to do a lot of debt relief going forward, not just pausing disconnects. And so first, starting with the bonuses, these millions in bonuses that have been turned down, I'm hoping we can move that into direct payments, and maybe through the same 16 million or so that the council is picking up. It would make a huge difference. Other cities like Austin are putting a lot more money into these funds like this. So if we could pause the bills, talk about debt forgiveness, and end these top executive bonuses entirely, unless we tie them into achieving the goals of the Climate Action Plan. And unfortunately, I've yet to hear a direct blueprint, a roadmap, to getting those goals met, which include 40, over 40% by 2030 in reductions in greenhouse gases. So I'd like to get really serious about that, talk about these bonus structures, what they're intended to be, what they need to be, and really speak to the needs of our communities, which is going to be debt forgiveness and ending disconnects as policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. And our last speaker is Aaron Arguello.
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to address you directly today. I hope you're all staying safe and healthy. My name is Aaron Arguello. I'm an advocacy organizer at Move Texas. I'm a San Antonio resident and a customer of CPS Energy. I am speaking today to emphasize the need to move away from coal and towards sustainable energy. Young people across the country are leading the way in the climate conversation, and young people in San Antonio are becoming especially aware of the need for change because we're being disproportionately affected by carbon emissions. Young black and brown people in San Antonio have some of the highest rates of asthma in the country. The Climate Action and Adaptation Plan adopted by the city council pledges to reach carbon neutrality by 2050, a goal that will not be possible without the closure of the Spruce Coal Plant. In order to achieve this goal, we'll need data transparency from our utility company. So can we see modeling on what 100% renewable energy would look like? And could we tie carbon emission reductions to bonuses and CEOK? We need meaningful energy democracy, including a rate advisory committee. We've made great strides already in terms of public input, what citizens to be heard, and we're grateful for the opportunity to address you directly, but we still lack the ability to weigh in on decisions. Customers in San Antonio need to be able to have meaningful input in decision-making spaces, not just spaces to testify publicly. The goals outlined in the cap will not be attainable without CPS being willing to communicate with and take input from its customers. So I hope we can work together to make this a reality. Thank you for your time. Have a good day, and please stay safe.
All right. Thanks. That concludes the public comment portion of our meeting, and we'll move to Agenda Item Six, COVID-19 Business Continuity Update. Ms. Paula Gold Williams.
Okay. Thank you very much. What I am going to focus on is kind of a wide aspect of various things that are being impacted by COVID, and the range from our everyday activities and how we're functioning all the way to the things that we're seeing with customers so far, as well as the observations that are currently being made on the financial landscape with rating agencies and other entities. I will, though, move my comments around a bit relative to the public comment. I think if I look at them directly, five of the six comments were directly focused on the rate advisory committee, and maybe even the sixth one was inherently focused on the rate advisory committee. So I do want to start out and indicate that we are continuing to work on it. I will say that our major activities that we're focused on are being driven by COVID. Last month, when I gave the CEO update, I did make a public comment that we are continuing to work on the rate advisory committee, and our primary effort was a request for a proposal that we had out there. And we've been talking about this request for a proposal for a couple of months. Even the request for proposal process was somewhat affected by the COVID-19 global pandemic crisis that we have. We issued proposals, solicited over 300 companies to potentially bid on helping us. And this is, again, somebody independent from us to help with the stakeholder group to make sure that they're looking at the information, the format, the discussion, just any way that they can with the committee once it is established. We did get requests to extend the period because people just needed more time.
Oh, Ms. Gold Williams, this is John Steen.
Yes.
I would like a clarification
Yes, sir.
From our general counsel. In other words, your agenda is to talk, to speak to the COVID-19 Business Continuity Update. I just want to be sure we're okay legally sort of getting into something that's not on the agenda. So I just ask Ms. Schellman to reassure us, if she can, that everything's okay with that.
I think that just a brief discussion very quickly, but if we get too far into this discussion, I think that it would go beyond the way we posted it. So.
Could I put an emphasis on brief, please?
In all due respect, I'm almost done. But it was affected by COVID, so that is the reason why I'm indicating that this is an item, and I'm trying to talk a little slow because I made these same comments last time, and the comments where they hadn't heard anything. So I want to just wrap this part up with, the RFP has gone out, we've got them in, and we're looking at them. It is still going to take some time to make, you know, to go through them in light of everything else, but we are working on those. So this is a little tricky because the COVID-19 affects everything. It isn't only about the pandemic. It's about how we are being affected in our everyday activities. I make comments that we are flying the plane while rebuilding it in the middle of fog because there is a lack of being able to be unsure when we exactly will come out of the COVID-19 period that we have, how long will it be, and how extensive it will be for our community to recover. And so my comments today are kind of blended in terms of what we're experiencing and how is it impacting us and how are we working through it. We are working intensely every day. We are increasing our communication, both inside and outside of the company. Our employees are designated as essential personnel. They deal with infrastructure, and they must keep the grid going. We are a vertically integrated company that has generation, transmission, and distribution activities, and we service customers. So we're in every aspect of it, and we ultimately have to make sure that our employees are ready with the equipment they need, the health support they need, the transitional support that they need. Our employees, just like everyone else in the community, are being affected by many things, like school closures. Many of our employees have to, had to make alternative arrangements for daycare, had to really change their whole way, even if they're working at home, in light of the families that they are taking care of, both elderly and children. And in turn, and some of them having night school, or as Trustee Gonzalez says, she's even doing night school, or day school, trying to figure out how to make their daily activities stay in balance. We do continue to do outreach in social media. We are doing more print media, and we will be doing some additional television media, really to increase the ability for us to outreach to our customers and to support our employees at the same time. So we will continue to step up our efforts from that standpoint. We did do, as I talked about before, a Facebook session with Trustee Gonzalez focusing at all customers, but also focusing very much at small businesses. Last week, I did a Facebook session with Jeff Arndt, who's the president and CEO of VIA, and with Robert Puente from SaaS. And all as essential fundamental services, we were giving the community a lot of information about the changes that we've made in terms of social distancing, as well as the activities that we're trying to do to be more considerate of our customers. And there was a wide range of information, and we will continue to make ourselves available for those types of outreach. Again, anything we can do to give the information that customers need is what we're focused on. We'll talk a bit about the mask. The mayor and the judge very much have prepped everyone to move into masks in public places where social distancing cannot be practiced. We have been doing that for more than a week. We've probably been working on it for several weeks now, but all of our people have masks. We do have, need a wide range of masks. A good portion of our office employees are orange and white team, the office employees that are working on site, the white team, the employees that are working from home, the orange team. If they go out, if they need to come to the office for some occasion, they are all wearing cloth masks. But we also need other masks, so we have inventories of fire-resistant masks, and we have industrial masks, very much like medical professionals, M95 masks. We have had some challenges in our supply chain associated with the receipt of masks, the delivery of masks. We've had thousands on order, and we started receiving good shipments, delayed, but receiving them last week, which we were very pleased with. And we have continued to give our employees education about the right way to care for the mask, use the mask, dispose of the mask. This is a big deal in terms of what our employees have to do. I want to tie that to the health screening approach. Very appreciative, again, of the county and the city and the efforts of explaining to everyone what they need to do in health screening, and I've even participated in going on the website to do my own personal health screening. And we have encouraged our employees to do that type of process, to screen themselves every single day. We give them instruction internally. We make it available. We also send them to different websites to ask their general questions. And they range from, again, how do they feel personally, as well as is there anyone sick in their household? Are they taking any type of medication like aspirin, which would in fact suppress their temperature and not necessarily give them a good reading about whether or not they could have some illness of some type? The screenings are extremely important. We've continued to do health screening and stand downs where we go to locations. Everybody at that location stays home until they can get a formal health screening from either a journalist or a nurse that we have on staff. Then they must go through a temperature check before they can return to work. Last week, we started temperature checks randomly, random checks at the corporate office. We have people coming in and out of this location. It's not as fixed in terms of the work staffing that we find at the different service centers and at the plants. So we're doing test checks. If you get called from the nurses, from that standpoint, you must stay home, you must get your screening, and you must get an appointment to get your temperature checked before you can enter our building. And we will continue from that standpoint. I will say that it's been a real challenge, too, though, when we do have employees that are sick and may have some type of connection to someone who is seriously sick. And so we have been working with, Eric, the city manager, has given us increasingly more support from that standpoint, which we appreciate. The Barre County Health Department has also started giving us more support. We have been in touch with the Department of Homeland Security, very much looking at the new Coliseum facility that's there, that is helpful. Those are important improvements. I would still say that just everybody believes that the level of tests available in San Antonio aren't as robust as we probably need. So we end up putting people on sequester for at least 14 days. In some cases, we will leave them longer, depending on what their circumstances are. So the testing, which I understand is a global and a national issue, definitely matters here. Again, our employees, all 3,000 of them, are needed to keep the systems going, and we have critical jobs in our control rooms, our operators, our individuals who look at the system integrity of our transmission and distribution systems, our individuals who are pushing who are pushing and transacting power on behalf of all the residents of San Antonio, and also selling power in the grid to help Texas. All of these jobs and all the jobs that go around them are extremely critical. And we are really just trying to make sure that we can get as much access to more testing as we can. Obviously, we want the testing to make sure if someone is showing any signs as soon as possible. We have done our own studies and done a lot of research with some key people in our community, trying to make sure that we very much understand what the testing landscape looks like. We have been in touch with Dr. Larry Schlesinger from the Texas Biomedical Research Institute. He has been very helpful in helping us understand things like false positives and false negatives. And that very much can happen when someone is not exhibiting signs. So it still becomes very much a struggle to detect if someone has it, to quarantine them, to quarantine anyone who's been around them, and then make sure when they are home, again, that they are able to social distance at their own home. We are doing other research with other entities. We are connected. We recently got Dr. Bill Hemrich's recent video. He's the president of the UT Health Center for San Antonio. And again, we're trying to reach out to as many local experts as we can to, again, give us the information that we need to educate and make sure that our employees have the best information that we can. We have looked at contracting services for testing, and we are having some help, some success there. In the contracting of services, we are potentially going to be able to get an avenue for, but it's going to cost us some money to get that extra assurance. We do not have all the exact details. I can provide those as we develop that plan, but we do understand just going to public centers for our employees will not necessarily be enough. Like I said, we are dealing with Don Emmerich, who is also a professional in the healthcare arena, and Deputy Chief Andrew Estrada, who has also been helpful to us. It is just a constant perspective of trying to, again, make all the connections and get the education. Kathy Garcia, our Vice President of External Affairs and Public Policy, basically set up a call with the, at the federal level, with the Department of Homeland Security and the Department of Energy. Again, we are also trying to make sure that utility workers in the industry get the right level of priority associated with this testing. And probably the best way to describe this is the, our medical professionals are on the front line, our grocery store professionals are on the front line, but if we don't keep power flowing, neither one of those professionals can keep their organizations going. So it's not that we want to be put in front of everyone, we just want to be included. And we will continue to tell our story and continue to share the information and continue to take any help or assistance that we can, again, to get our testing procedures and protocol more robust than they are today. I do want to go in and focus again on our customer programs, again, from the very beginning. Because we have a very robust payment plan program for our customers, it is the biggest program that we have. We have over 100,000 people typically at any one time benefiting in some way from a payment plan out of our, if you look at it, you know, million-plus accounts, electric and gas. And so we always had that. We were always sensitive to the fact that in times of needing power the most, at the peak of the summer, and then during the December holidays, that we would suspend disconnects and couple that with payment programs. So when we saw this coming, yes, we invoked it, and we were glad to announce both of those programs running together. And we are still encouraging customers to call us, call 210-353-2222, to talk to our expert energy advisors who are there and ready to provide information and education and assistance to any customer that needs help. I will say that we also, I mean, that's the direct contact on the phone, we have been retraining our field people who interact with customers very much because of the COVID environment that we have. And what that looks like is, you know, in particular in the gas part of our business, our oldest part of our business, and they're very skilled and very technically trained, but if they're going out to check on our infrastructure, either outside or inside a person's home, that interaction previously was very much detailed, and they, our servicemen and journeymen, they would explain what they were doing. But now, when they show up to the door, they're showing up with gloves on, they're showing up having washed their hands and using hand sanitizer, they're showing up with masks and goggles, anything that they can to make sure that they are practicing proper social distancing. They will explain to the customer right away, showing their badge at a distance, explaining who they are. They will explain to the customer that they have gone through a screening process, again. They will assert to the customer, I've done that screening, I am not exhibiting and don't feel well today, and I am therefore prepared to enter your house safely. But I will keep my distance, and I will make sure that I'm explaining to you what I'm doing. They will also can go on to explain or ask the customers, is there anything in your house that they need to be aware of? Is there anyone ill in the house at the current time? If that case happens, they don't just leave, they call their supervisor, they escalate and try to figure out what the challenge is and how we can mitigate it, while at the same time making sure that we take care of the work order that's in place. So it has changed our whole routine. We are doing the videos and taping what that looks like for our employees. We are role-playing, we are scripting, we are showing them. And then we're ultimately, again, there to support them as they're having to change every part of the work that they do in the field, especially relative to the interactions. I do want to say we continue to focus on business continuity and the pandemic plan. We had those in place, and we continue to follow them, and we're putting a whole lot more meat on the bone because we're going through this current experience. At the recent Personnel Committee with Trustee Gonzalez and Trustee Kelly, I was asked to reinforce for the board our acting process. In other words, if, for example, I were to get ill, what would be the normal escalation for that role to be filled? Or, you know, any of our roles, our COO role, if Chris was to get ill, what would be our normal escalation process? We have that. I will be getting that to the board this week, so you know. But the good thing is, we were already practicing escalation processes relative to senior chiefs for a very long time, so we were able to then incorporate that process into our business continuity efforts. I did want to highlight that I'm meeting regularly with Eric Walsh, the city manager, and Robert Puente. Eric has set up meetings for us on a routine basis, again, where we can share information and, in fact, share approaches and just be supportive of each other. And we believe it's very, very important that the city, the water company, and the energy company are doing the best to keep the communication going. We are also continuing our communications with the utilities in the region. We are having regular meetings with Austin Energy, New Braunfels Energy, the Lower Colorado River Authority, and CPS Energy. Those meetings are being coordinated by the epicenter, and we are very much, again, sharing best practices and different things, all the way from the customers, the accounts, to how we're looking at quarantining and sequestering employees if necessary, and much, much more. So this has become very much a pandemic where you have to study it, and you have to share, and you have to be a student of the different things that you can do, and every resource for information is taken seriously from what we're doing. I do want to talk a little bit about our employee sequestering. Every utility has been looking at the potential need to sequester employees. And when we say this, again, we're looking at our most critical employees and trying to determine, is there a trigger where we will want to isolate them from the general population across San Antonio, as well as within CPS Energy, just to ensure that we can keep them safe and away from being sick, and make sure that we can keep our operations at below 24/7/365 in good order. I did explain earlier, this, again, applies to our generation area where we have control operators, control room operators and others that are critical in the delivery of power. There are many people critical. This is just a small group, again, that we have to be very, very careful with. And then we have people who monitor our systems on our transmission and distribution side, again, as well as our energy marketing activities. We are looking at many things. We've had, we've been talking about this for over a month. We have regularly daily meetings, sometimes twice a day, as we're trying to assess everything that's happening around us, and again, what would we need to do if we needed to sequester employees? We are looking at everything, including the metrics. The metrics include, we are monitoring community spread, and we're monitoring the velocity of spread. We are also looking at qualitative things like the landscape across San Antonio. We're looking at if the, if and how, well, when and how, the community will be opened up again, based upon the leadership of the mayor and the judge, as well as the governor of Texas. How might that, we need to restrict, again, access to those employees, even as we're opening up, just to make sure that they are not exposed to any unintended consequence? We very much are thinking about these things, in these cases, employees could be away from their family anywhere from, I would say, three to eight weeks. And we very much are assessing, how do we support the families while these individuals are fulfilling their mission and doing the right thing for the community? How do we support them? So we've been working on processes and connections for that purpose. And maybe the last point is, we're looking at liquidity. There was initially some discussion that the incremental costs, and it is incremental costs, you have to do housing, you have to do food, you have to do cleaning, and these are not, we're not stating these in terms of cosmetic perspectives. We have to think, for example, that how do their clothes get cleaned, and how do we make sure that the people who do clean their clothes don't have an illness? And how do we treat the laundry that they get back? I mean, it's, everything has to be processed and assessed in a very meticulous manner. And so we are looking at all of these things, and we're looking at the cost, the potential outlay. We initially thought that the incremental cost of that could be covered from FEMA. FEMA typically provides an incremental cost recovery to utilities that are helping during the storm season. I mean, all the time they do that. But the real reality of the situation is FEMA has not received any additional money to help support the incremental cost of COVID, and even relative to the reliability and the resiliency of the systems that we have. The federal government is doing a lot in terms of the CARES Act and individuals and businesses, all the right things that they should do, but right now, there are no additional funds for utilities, be they municipal or IOUs, for these resources. So again, we're going to have to weigh the timing of invoking these activities, incurring these costs, covering these costs, and pulling people out of a sequester state when the right time is in front of us. And I will continue to keep you updated on that. We are very much in a central service of, just in general, utilities are, infrastructure activities are. And I do want to, again, say that we do continue to see San Antonio moving in terms of the construction activity, which is good, because, again, that means the economy in some ways is moving, not as much as anyone would like, but it is. Construction projects continue to move, and we are working with developers, and we are working with real estate companies, anybody who's out there doing a project, we're talking intensely to them to make sure that we are meeting their expectations, even in time, even in these times that are difficult under COVID. I will say, I'm going to transition to a punctuation point for the board. Our construction project, a headquarters project, continues, and we have not had a lapse in the people working on the ground. But I will say, it looks like we probably will have a delay of a couple of weeks at this time. And they are, just in general activities, I think very, very much, two of them are just indirectly focused or as a result of COVID. One is, we got some new requirements from the fire marshal, just again, as they went through the whole construction project, something came up that we didn't expect, but we are taking care of. We also had some water infrastructure additional work that we needed to do. Nothing insurmountable, but just important things that we needed to do to put in the sequence. Maybe the one that's more directly a focus on COVID is, we have had some trouble with the timing of certain furniture deliveries, and that probably more so than anything is causing some of the delay on the timeframe. We don't believe that this is causing us any major financial impact, and we don't see in any way that our budget of $215 million is in jeopardy of being exceeded. I will, again, say that we are on time, close, we're close, and maybe I can't say on time, we're close to being on time, reasonably on time, but we are on budget, and I will continue to keep you updated on that. We continue to use all types of additional technology, WebEx, those kind of things. We have seen some challenges with the network capacity. We use WebEx, other organizations are using Zoom, and those are helpful and valid tools, but we've seen some constraints. Hasn't affected our business tremendously, but our EIT team is very much monitoring everything, and WebEx as a service provider has really been tweaking and updating the capacity. So we continue to use it, and it's very helpful from what we're doing. My last major part of my discussion today has to do with more of the business aspect of COVID and some of the things that we're seeing. The biggest point that I want to indicate is that clearly everyone sees that the economic and financial impacts of COVID are deep, and it's affecting everyone, and I don't believe there's any company that's exceptionally doing well and doesn't have to make some type of special considerations or really kind of manage their financials just differently now because of what's happened. So we have one of the highest ratings in the industry, both IOUs and municipals. We are double A plus by Moody's and Fitch, and we are double A in S&amp;P. We monitor and watch everything that credit rating agencies do, it's comprehensive. Because we have such good ratings, that keeps our cost of borrowing low, and that saves our customers and community money. It matters. It matters just like it does on a credit rating for an individual. The better credit rating you have, the better access you have to financing and support, and the better rate that you get. S&amp;P, in particular, just put out an announcement that, earlier, a couple of weeks ago, that they are putting the municipal industry on negative outlook. And this is an economic view. Again, if customers are struggling and cash gets tighter and business slows down, then these are the indicators that they look at. And they put a big group of entities in there, and utilities are definitely included. Because we have such a high rating, and we have done well even in the face of adversity for many, many years, I think that we were one of the first entities that S&amp;P reached out. um, I think that we were one of the first entities that S and P reached out to. And, um, we had a meeting on, uh, April fourteenth with two of their analysts that, um, monitor our efforts very closely. And I wanna give you all a sense of some of the things that, um, they are asking. Um, for example, uh, they ask, uh, here's a, here's a perspective. The quality of service and reliability may be disrupted due to employees inability to service grid operations. Utilities are around the clock operations and if illness or quarantine, um, impair a utilities workforce and operations to grid, revenues could follow. And so, again, they're, they're addressing, how does a utility deal with, um, the fact that we have to be 24/7/365? And there isn't any, any part of the day where there isn't something happening where the power, um, has to flow, both electric and gas. We gave them a very thorough, um, conversation about our overall approach, about how our senior chiefs are absolutely focused on the activity that we are, we are meeting in all day long into the night to, to address issues and making sure that we're taking care of the needs of customers and very much, though, looking at how we can modify our operations to make that work. We are very much, um, focused on how we're handling, um, the information and the education from everything from looking at what the CDC does to what our local health authorities are doing. We shared with them all of our activities around the self-quarantine and how we are approaching the potential aspect of sequester. And, um, we have been able to, um, talk to them, and this is a key part of what we do. Every single area is monitored, it's absenteeism and actually, um, attendance at wo- at work has been, has been good. And people have been, um, you know, we are there for them if they need help, if they need, um, time off and they need to be sequestered. That is not a challenge, we can support them. But at the same time, our employees are arising to the occasion and do understand that we're in a central mission, essential service and mission driven and, um, and we need to be out there doing our job to make sure everything, um, happens. I'm gonna give a couple of more examples of some of the questions that they ask, so you have a sense. But I will also, you know, continue to give you updates going forward. One of them is, um, uh, the focus on the makeup of the customer base is extremely important. Um, those utilities with a large percentage of revenues coming from commercial industrial customers may be at greater risk. Rating agencies are focusing on the competition of, the composition of the customer base for diversity of re- revenue streams. Um, we were able to report to S and P and will, um, will share with the others that we have a fairly good diversified mix of customers. About forty-five percent of our customers are residential, about thirty-five percent are commercial and about twenty percent are other customer activities, industrial lighting, things like that. Um, and even within those categories, we have a good mix in the number of customers. So, um, ultimately, we're in good shape from that standpoint. But we also had to acknowledge that because of our composition of our community, we are experiencing, um, challenges because our customers are, um, you know, experiencing challenges. So we do monitor the activity by sector and very much so we are seeing stress on the hospitality sector, including food, retail, higher education, those kinda things. So we, we in no way, um, try to make sure, make the rating agency believe that we don't see these challenges. We very much do, but the general aspect of diversity, we're in, we're in good, um, space with that. Um, ten million individuals, uh, have filed for unemployment benefits for the last two weeks, uh, could re- result in increased bad debts. And this is probably one of the biggest challenges that any utility has at this time. Um, and but what we were able to share with them is, because we have had such a very robust payment program and disconnect suspension is not, um, foreign in our community, we know how to work with our, with our customers and we do care about the issues that they're going through. And we very much are gonna do our best to help them through this transition. And but ultimately, we know that we have to collect, um, and we'll work with the city and look for other means of collection. But we're going to have to work through this very methodically. There is not one area of our community that is any better, um, positioned right now to then, then be the savior of another group of people. And so it won't be that the business community will be able to take on a huge burden to take on the, the, the extra pressures on residents and vice versa. In no way can residents take on more to support businesses. So we're basically going to have to work with everyone. Um, we have had a very low debt, um, write-off number, uh, below two percent. Um, and we are closely monitoring all the cash flows and the aging on a regular basis. And we'll have an analysis for the board every, every month on, you know, what are we seeing and what are the implications? Again, with the rating agency, you, you, you have to just, you know, clearly tell them what the challenges that you have and then just be very, very prudent on how you're approaching those, um, those issues. Um, if there's just a couple more. Um, they said many issues are absorbing significant unbudgeted costs. As I indicated to you before, um, this sequester thing, if we do, it can be very, very expensive. And, um, again, we need to make sure that the power is flowing and that's the primary perspective. People need reliable and safe and resilient power. But we do have to look at the fact that these incremental costs can be quite large. Um, and just even on top of that, we are ordering more masks and more cleaning and, um, incurring more costs for, um, the individuals who have to quarantine. All of those costs, um, are being incurred by us without the ability to actually increase productivity per se on, on each one of those. So, um, the, the big point is, the board has always, um, told us and reinforced for us that managing the financial, um, picture of the company is critical. Um, we very much went through our six pillars and came back to the fact that the financial stability of the company has to be the foundation. We were already well positioned from that standpoint and had had a really good year, um, in fiscal twenty, which was, um, ended January thirty-first of this year, twenty twenty. And, um, so we're, we're moving from a position of strength and our people are now, the, the leadership and management team continues to look at things that we can do, can we defer without significantly affecting our operations and the service that we're providing? Um, all of these things that we're trying to do to keep everything in balance. So, um, so again, it's a, it's an active engagement. I think, um, that meeting with the S and P group went extremely well. We have, um, the other, uh, the other agencies set up, Fitch is on April thirtieth and Moody's is on, on May ninth. I think they are all watching how every single utility is managing through this crisis. And, um, they, they believe that, though, there will be more negative actions in credit across the board. Not, they're not targeting us, uh, in any particular way. But they think on average, twenty twenty will be a year of more negative actions than positive actions. I mean, and, and we are very much, you know, again, we're, we're, we're driven to, to lean into this and, and do our best. Um, and we are, you know, we are learning. If Disney can be downgraded, um, and have, you know, uh, credit views, you know, something that we thought was, um, recessionary proof, that's challenging. Um, and then, um, we saw the headline today that, uh, oil prices, um, went below zero, which is incredibly, um, disruptive to the landscape. And it's disrupting our customers and that disruption, we understand, is something that we're going to have to work with them and manage through. So, um, I wanted to, to make sure that, uh, the board does have a sense that we are, um, we got a wide, robust, um, approach to doing a lot of things. We are having to look at all of our processes as much as we can. It is, these are long days and tough nights and our, our people are hanging in there and their attitudes are really, really great and, um, and we're just, we're just focused because we know we have to be here for the community. And I will try to cut my comments off there and see if any board member has any questions for me.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, trustees, uh, this is John Stane. Uh, do you have any questions or comments regarding our CEO's COVID nineteen business continuity update?
Yes, sir.
No, no comments. No comments, Trustee Gonzalez.
Chairman Stane.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Dr. Mackey.
Yes, hey, uh, I, I like all the things that, uh, Mr. Williams said. And I like the update and, uh, I praise the company employees for all the great things that they're doing that, that on the frontline and making sure to keep our utilities and our going. But I do have a question too, and, and, and I'd like to share this with all board members and the chair, is that sometimes with these updates like today, it's just like drinking, uh, water out of a fire hydrant all at one time. And I like to absorb this stuff, but
Yes, sir.
I would, I would like, if you could give us a written update, maybe on the fifteenth, between board me- meetings, give us an update on these challenges and, and, and things that you're doing. Because I really appreciate today, I know the guy was going around today giving out, um, the, the masks and, and things and, and I looked at him and watched him and I know he's been trained and all of that. Uh, that would, things like that will work well and, and, and kind of a financial update on where we at, uh, just like a brief, uh, snapshot on where we at. Because looking at how we compare it with the commercial and the industry, sale revenues, are they up or they down? Residential's up and down, uh, the, the high debt is, debt is, and how are we going along with the quarantine sequester? How are we working on that? And, um, you know, are we pressured into, uh, not pressured, but, but w- will the, the number of, uh, the, the revenue that we receive and the, what we give into the city, is that gonna be, is it gonna be a significant difference? You know, just kinda give us an update before we have our regular meeting. If you could do it on the fifteenth every month, because we have our meeting at the end of every month. If you could give us a, you know, a page or something of update that you think that in between sessions that we could get that would be very receptive to this board member.
Yes, sir, will do.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, then, we'll move to Agenda Item Seven, which is convened to executive session. And, um, you know, on the working agenda that I have, it's, it's indicating a roll call, I'm not sure what that is. But, um, uh, I, I would guess, I would ask Carolyn Schellman, do we need a roll call of some sort? And then, um, would you take us into the executive session?
No, sir, I believe the roll call on the working agenda was just to direct the discussion, which we just went through. And if, if it were difficult to manage without calling on people, we were gonna, we were prepared to do that. Um, so at this point, uh, the board will now move into executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under Texas five five one, under Chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code. And there are a number of issues, I apologize, there's a lot of feedback here. Um, a number of issues that we have, are posted to, um, discuss, including attorney-client matters under five five one point oh seven one, action on real property under Section five five one oh seven two, prospective gifts or donations under five five one oh seven three, personnel under five five one oh seven four, security grid devices under five five one oh seven six, and, uh, competitive matters under Section five five one oh eight six. So at this time, it is three oh four, the board will move into executive session. When we return from executive session, we do not anticipate that there will be any votes that will need to be taken in the open session when we return and we have not posted for that.
Right, uh, David, um, do you want to, um, do you want to go over process for us going into executive session? Are you, are you on the line, David? Well, I, I believe that, uh, at this point, uh, those of, those of us on the board are to hang up and, and dial in another number, uh, to get into the executive session. And then, and when, and then when we're, when we've concluded the executive session, we'll, we'll drop that line and call back into this number, uh, that we, we've been using for the open meeting. So, um, so unless there are any other questions, I guess we'll go ahead and proceed, uh, which, which is to, to, you know, to get off of this line and to call into the other. All right, we're now back in open session. And Carolyn Schellman, could you, uh, can you, can you, uh, bring us out to closed session?
Yes, sir, the board concluded its executive session at four forty-six. It's taken us a minute or two to get technologically back in here and ready to go. So we, uh, it is now four fifty-three. Uh, nothing was done in executive session except discuss the matters as posted, there were no votes taken. Uh, the board is ready to resume the open session.
All right, and I believe that we've got, um, we've got myself, Dr. Mackey and Mr. Kelly on the line. And we, we, uh, I think that Trustee Gonzalez did not join us, uh, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, good, Dr. Mackey, go ahead on your motion.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
And, uh, is there a second?
This is Ed Kelly, I'll second.
Do we have a motion by Dr. Mackey second by Mr. Kelly to adjourn the meeting? All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
Any opposed, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.